The Calamazoo City Commission to Order for Monday, November 13th, 2017. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Millsar.
Present.
Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. Tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of the city commission meeting of October 16th, 2017. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
Still moved.
Moved by Commissioner Millsar.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sykes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. I guess I should've said aye. Item C is the report of the Board of Canvassers for the general city election of November 7th, 2017. Clerk Borling, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. The Calamazoo County Board of Canvassers has certified the following results from the municipal election held on November 7th. Having received 6,028 votes, Bobby J. Hopewell was elected mayor. Having received 4,869 votes, Aaron Knott was elected city commissioner and is by charter the vice mayor. Having received 4,809 votes, Eric Cunningham was elected city commissioner. And having received 3,377 votes, Jack C. Urban was elected city commissioner. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The report of the Board of Canvassers for the municipal election of November 7th, 2017 is received into the record. We now have a proclamation honoring Commissioner Millsar. The vice mayor is going to handle the proclamation. If you'll head to the podium and we'll celebrate you.
This is a proclamation honoring Matt Millsar for dedication and service to the city of Calamazoo. Whereas Commissioner Millsar has served honorably as a city commissioner of the city of Calamazoo from November 9th, 2015 to November 13th, 2017, and whereas Commissioner Millsar has diligently served as an officer, liaison, or member on boards and committees on behalf of the city of Calamazoo, including the Community Development Act Advisory Committee, and the Friend of Recreation Board, and whereas Commissioner Millsar has served on committees and subcommittees of the city commission, including the Internal Audit Committee and Shared Prosperity Calamazoo Families Goal Team, and whereas Commissioner Millsar has exhibited his commitment to the city through his work with Calamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services, his involvement with the Vine Neighborhood Association, and his service on the Blue Ribbon Revenue Panel, and whereas Commissioner Millsar will leave an indelible mark on our community as a result of his love for and dedication to the city of Calamazoo, now therefore be it resolved that the 51st City Commission does hereby honor, recognize, and thank Matt Millsar for his dedicated service on the city commission and his many contributions to our community.
We also have a gift for you in celebration of your service. And the floor is yours.
Well, I'm honored and it's been an honor to serve the community these past years and to serve with all of you up there. My time at the dais may be done, but my work in the community will go on. So you haven't heard the last of me. Now I can stand up here for four minutes.
Commissioners, this is certainly your opportunity to make some remarks if you'd like regarding Commissioner Millsar, or, well, mainly about Commissioner Millsar. We'll wait for other remarks later. So, Commissioner Urban.
Well, for myself, I would say Matt's been a very helpful resource to me. And we've had good conversations and we've been very open with each other and that's very important. So I count on your still being available. Matt did help me with my Facebook account and I owe him some money for that still, as a matter of fact. So that's a special reason why I'm grateful to him.
Commissioner Sykes.
So here we are again. I, you know, shared some of my thoughts with you already on election night. It's a bittersweet night for me. I look forward to moving forward with the new commission, but I'm gonna miss you. You know, when we started up here, I sort of knew you, but not well. And I'm proud to have served with you and also to call you a really good friend. I look forward to seeing you out there in the community, off of the dais, moving forward. But, you know, we all have our strengths up here. And to me, yours has always been an eye for the details. And so I appreciate everything that I've learned from you. I appreciate all that you've given to this body and to our community. You know, you've served honorably with integrity and courage and dedication and that means a lot. Means a lot. So I say this, as a fellow commissioner and also as a mom, you know, who was raised in this community, thank you for everything that you've given us. And I am gonna miss glancing over at you from time to time up here. Thanks, Matt.
Commissioner Anderson.
It's interesting how time flies. You know, our more serious relationship started a couple of years and a few months ago, I think, sitting in a Fourth Coast Cafe, as a matter of fact, if I remember right. And I'm really not worried about whether we'll see each other again, because actually I have a sense that we will see each other quite a bit, even if it's from there, back here. So I just want to say, I know I don't know, I'll admit, I don't know or spend time with very many accordion players, but Matt is by far and away the best one I know. And I am looking forward to perhaps some less formal engagements when I'll be able to enjoy that portion of what you bring to the community, your musical genius. So, thanks so much, Matt. Been a pleasure. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Vice Mayor.
Well, Matt, thank you so much. I know your dedication and your care for the people of this community, and especially for your expertise in the area of housing. And I know that what you cared about most was that the people who were struggling in this community can get the kind of a life they deserve. And you did a really good job on that. Thank you for all you've done.
Commissioner Lee.
So, I don't know if you know this, but Hedwig is my favorite musical of all time. And when I learned that you headlined it, I was blown away. So, I know that we're gonna continue to work together, particularly as it relates to code and housing code enforcement and working on affordable housing and workforce housing. So I look forward to, you know, continuing that work, but just in a different capacity.
And just real quick for me, I know that we talked a lot about you running for this office before you did. And you gave it, "No, no, we talked to you again." And you still said, "No," and then we talked to you again. Said, "Well, maybe," and then we talked to you again, and then you said, "Okay, I'll do it." So I love being able to be that little drip of water, just hitting you with that. And then we ran together, certainly with Commissioner -elect Cunningham and you and I, and Tesla on your backpack, or holding one of our hands, or going door to door. And so what I think I'm excited most about for you, not necessarily us, but for you, is that you get to spend so much more time with that wonderful daughter of yours. She is beautiful, because she's got a great dad, who's really helped her become the person she is. And now you get to work on that even more. So appreciate all your service. Appreciate your time up here and enjoy it. And I know we're gonna hear from you. There's no doubt in my mind on that. So congratulations for your new journey. Okay, so we are going to adjourn the 51st City Commission, seeing a DA. Attorney has taught me this a number of times. So I'm adjourning us, but I want you to stand by because we gotta make some changes up here, because we have two other things, significant things we have to do. We have to swear in the new commission, and then we have to have a general, a quick meeting immediately after that swearing in. So if you'll give us a couple of minutes, we're gonna do a few things and we'll get started again. And thank you,
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'm City Clerk Scott Borling. And at this time, I will administer the constitutional oath of office to our newly-elected city officials. After taking the oath, to mark their election to public office, the mayor, vice mayor, and commissioners are being presented with a city pin, which bears the seal of the city to remind them of the solemn duties enjoined upon them as they take office. Each official has asked a special person in their lives to do the pinning. Commissioner-elect Urban. Commissioner-elect Urban is being pinned by his wife, Carol Urban. Commissioner-elect Urban, please face the audience, raise your right hand, and repeat the oath of office with me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of city commissioner for the city of Calamazoo
Of the office of city commissioner for the city of Calamazoo.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Urban, do you agree to abide by this oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Urban. You may take your seat at the dais. Commissioner Cunningham is being pinned by his father, Coleman Cunningham. Commissioner-elect Cunningham, please face the audience, raise your right hand, and repeat the oath after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of city commissioner for the city of Calamazoo
Of the office of city commissioner for the city of Calamazoo.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Cunningham, do you agree to abide by this oath?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations, Commissioner Cunningham. You may take your seat at the dais. Vice Mayor Knott is being pinned by her partner, Amy Gill. Vice Mayor-elect Knott, please face the audience, raise your right hand, and repeat the oath after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of city commissioner and vice mayor for the city of Calamazoo
Of the office of city commissioner and vice mayor for the city of Calamazoo.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Knott, do you agree to abide by this oath and serve in the role of vice mayor?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations. You may take your seat at the dais. Mayor Hopewell is being pinned by the first mom, Magnolia Bodley. Mayor-elect Hopewell, please face the audience, raise your right hand, and repeat the oath after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of mayor of the city of Calamazoo
Of the office of mayor of the city of Calamazoo.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Mayor Hopewell, do you agree to abide by this oath?
Aye.
At this time, Mayor Hopewell, you may take your seat on the dais. Congratulations.
Everyone, I'd like to present the 52nd City Commission of the city of Calamazoo. The 52nd City Commission of the city of Calamazoo, under the Charter of 1918, is hereby called to order. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Knott.
Here.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. For our opening ceremony this evening, the invocation this evening will be given by my good friend, Reverend Nathan Dannison of the First Congregational Church. Reverend Dannison, please come to the podium. All in the audience and all of us in the room, I ask that you stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am famously brief with these things. But tonight, I want to exercise a little bit of privilege and just say that I have walked beside all of you. And I am absolutely honored to see a commission of individuals who all are committed to the well-being of this city. And I also want to say personally, I thank you and I recognize the sacrifice that this office exacts from each of you. Thank you for all that you give to our city. Kinfolk, let us pray. Almighty Creator, our guide and destination, we reach out to you on behalf of our beloved community. We give thanks for these courageous people. We have chosen them and named them and entrusted them with the care of our city. By our practice of democracy, we declared them able, and they responded to our request. And we ask you to strengthen their resolve to do the will of the people in these coming seasons. So strengthen them. Uphold them with righteousness. Holy One, our nation is beset today by terrible anxiety, confusion, and inequality. Truth stands precariously upon the scaffold and wrong upon the throne. Yet we have hope that you keep watch and that your wisdom, holy and ancient, will correct our present course and restore us to right paths. Make of this year a year of jubilee in our city of Calamazoo. Inspire each and every member of our city to recommit themselves to the pursuit of justice for the oppressed, liberty for the captive, happiness for the tired and world-weary, and joy for all generations. Do these things not for our own sake, but for the sake of our inheritors, those who've yet to be born. Remind us and these commission members that small decisions echo on through distant ages and keep us safe from stumbling and backsliding and giving over to despair. Give us the courage to proclaim this year a year of goodwill, hard work, and renewed faith in the promises of our democracy. These in the thoughts of our hearts, we lift to you by all of your many holy, beautiful, and glorious names. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Well, again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here for this most solemn occasion. Before we move on, some of us up here need to sign our oath of office. Am I in the right order? And so we're going to do that real quick, so you know we're official. We're Mr. Clerk, I present to you our oath of office. We have a number of guests this evening, some dignitaries that we want to make sure we recognize, even though all of you are dignitaries and you honor us with your presence. I know that we have in the audience the treasurer of our county, Mary Balkama. Madam Treasurer, welcome. One of our county commissioners, Commissioner Michael Seals. Hello, my friend. Welcome this evening. Thanks for being here. The city manager for the city of Portage, Lawrence Schaefer is here. This guy has ran a great, helped run a great election, and we need to recognize our county clerk, Tim Snow, is here this evening. Thank you for your work. It worked on Tuesday. And finally, a guy that really needs no recognition or no acknowledgement, but we know that he is doing great work for us every single day in Lansing, our outstanding state representative, We are now on item I, the opportunity for folks in the audience to make any congratulatory remarks. And I'll say that again, congratulatory remarks, because we do have citizens' comments at the end of this meeting, as we always do. But this time, an opportunity is given to you to, if you have some congratulatory remarks you'd like to make, feel free. You will step to the podium. I don't know that we're timed necessarily, so feel free. And anyone can do that. And we don't mind if you don't also.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is John Hoadley. I live at 2720 Parkview Avenue and here in Calamazoo. And I bring greetings on behalf of my legislative colleagues. Senator O'Brien and myself, as well as our area delegation, wants to extend our sincere congratulations. We are so excited for the new faces that are joining the commission or rejoining the commission, folks who ran a really good campaign that was about issues in our city. And we look forward to adding your voices to an already incredibly competent and well-qualified city commission. And to our new vice mayor, weeks-end special congratulations. We've been so honored to watch your leadership, and we look forward to the great things to come. And of course, to those that have been doing an excellent steward of the, and service in vice mayor for the past couple of years, we look forward to your continued leadership as well. So thank you so much and congratulations.
Good evening.
My name's Zachary Laster. I live in the city of Calamazoo. I just want to say congratulations to Vice Mayor Knott and Commissioner Cunningham. I remember about two years ago, I told you to save your nameplate, because you'd be back. I believe the font on there is a little different than what it was last time, so why didn't you?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Camilla Alfred. I live here in Calamazoo. And I just want to say, welcome all the ones that And I just want to say, welcome all the ones that got upon it again. And especially welcome to Eric Cunningham, I think he's a wonderful young man and y'all couldn't have did a better choice.
Of course, I'm going to come up a little biased. My name is Cole Cunningham, my son Eric, thank for being here, I thank for Aaron, I thank for Mayor Hopewell. They had me working, so my son, he had me working. I was supposed to be retired, but it was a good cause. He's a good son and you have a good commissioner that's going to represent the Kalamazoo real well. If he's like a son, if he's like a son, he's going to be like a city commissioner like he is a son, he's going to be great. And I think everybody can attest to that, that's why I have so many friends here. I just thank the Lord for him being a good son and he's going to be a great commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bishop Herbert B. Cunningham of the Church of God Pentecostal here in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Thank God so much for this council that is getting ready to take on a great task for the next few years. And thank God for my nephew being on this council again, very wonderful young man. I think he's going to do a wonderful job and be able to assist our city commissioners and the City of Kalamazoo and represent very, very well. I'm very proud of him and of the council itself and the work that you're doing here in Kalamazoo. And it's a very, very hard task, but you have my support, especially he has my support. If you have any problems with him, just give me a call. And we'll straighten him out. Thank you so much and have a wonderful four years.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Kristi Jones, congratulations to everyone. Especially to Eric Cunningham from the North Side Rocket Football Association. We have some young folks here, we are all very proud of you, you know you coached them. And what would we like to say?
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach E.
Yeah?
Congratulations, Coach Eric.
Thank you, congratulations.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, thank you for this tremendous ceremony, it's a good one. I just wanted to add a couple of comments, because I'm also President of the East Side Neighborhood Association. And I just want you to know that I'm impressed with all of your work. And Matt, you're kind of young still, you could still wind up back here. Eric found that out. So, congratulations to all of you and look forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Definitely congratulations to everybody that pretty much ran for Commissioner. Definitely want to give a big shout out to Uncle, he really, he really loves the city, he really saw the city a lot. He dedicates his heart, soul and blood to the city and, like I said, wish none but Eric the best. Congratulations.
Anyone else? Okay, we are now at general citizens' comments on anything this evening. Please step to the podium, you'll have four minutes, give us your name and whether you live within the city.
I'm Frank Warren, I live in Lynn Terrace. In front of you see a picture of the Unknown Soldier of World War I. That time was known as Armistice Day. Usually the Congress changes to Veterans Day. It kind of makes me upset to see us have a Christmas parade on our day, our Veterans Day. You know, the veterans in Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo County have been treated like third-class citizens. I know this, to be a fact. You're closing our VA office and merging with something else. That means I go into Battle Creek to get the help if I want help with the VA. You know, this is a thing that goes on here in Kalamazoo. And these guys here, this picture's down here of the Unknown Soldier, if you flip them, there's more pages. Them pictures are 1920, they were taken on November 11th, 1920. That's when they buried the Unknown Soldier at Arlington National Cemetery. I belong to a great organization, our organization came out of that World War I. In fact, our organization is known as the Forty Slash Eight. That metal box car could hold eight horses or forty men when they went to the firing line in France. That pre-strewn was signed in France, it was to end all wars, but it never did. So when you guys stand there and have a parade on Veterans Day, I think it's a little bit upsetting. And it's upsetting to a lot of veterans. I've talked to a lot of veterans and they're already upset about it. In fact, you know what? All the Battle Creek City Commissioners were out to Fort Custer Saturday at their service out there, because I was there. I know what I'm talking about. The only thing I'm waiting for right now is to sell our condo, put my wife in a nursing home, so I can sell her condo, put her money in the bank, so she's got something to live on while she's in a nursing home. I've got, I've got a home over in Battle Creek, also got a home in France that I can go to anytime I want to go. Because I hold a dual citizenship between here and France. I don't have just a United States citizenship, I have two of them, because I was married to a French girl. And she died over there. So, people, when you start thinking about Veterans Day again, it's on the 11th, which is our holiday, not Christmas holiday. It's not, it's not a commercialized holiday. Ours is Veterans Day, a very serious day for us veterans. I think seriously, somebody on here on this commission should go back and see when they can change it so it doesn't fall on a Veterans Day or they can have it a day early or a day a week later. Makes no difference. It makes no difference to me. But I'm just saying, I'm a veteran, it upsets me, upsets me the way we're treated as citizens. In fact, right now, you don't say nothing about a homeless veteran in Kalamazoo, but they got a place in Bad Hurk for homeless veterans, we don't in Kalamazoo. Why don't we? And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to, uh, please, no clapping. We're not celebrating now, we're back in our regular meeting. Anyone else wanting to comment to the commission this evening? Seeing no one. Seeing, uh... Feel free.
Congratulations to all of you in Kalamazoo, lived here a long time and was asked to...
Ma'am, can we have your name and whether you live within the city?
I'm Patricia Meyer, my office is in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and I fight for workers and retirees throughout the country. I returned from DC and I was asked by people in this city to come and congratulate all you and say that they have some situations they'd like to discuss with the commission. I left a packet up there for you, I did not want to get into this celebration today. And I've asked Mayor Hopewell and our past mayor to always fight for people. And at this time, we represent 100,000 people and 800,000 retirees. And the Kalamazoo people asked me to come to truly congratulate you tonight. And the information I gave to the commission, I'd like them to look at. And some of the people would like to talk to you about some justice issues. And they're hoping the City of Kalamazoo, we started our group, will take up their situation with them. So, celebrate tonight, look at the packets that we furnished you. And we'd like to ask some questions probably at your next meeting. And I'll send some of the people who really care about our country and what's happening. Celebrate well, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening? Seeing no one, before we go into commissioners' comments, I want to remind the audience or let the audience know that in the atrium, we will have a reception this evening immediately following this, uh, this meeting. Traditionally, on this night, it's an opportunity for commissioners to make some celebratory comments or other comments. Certainly recognize those that are joining us and leaving us and any other comments you might have. So tonight, we will start with Commissioner Sykes.
Thank you. You're back. So, I was thinking about tonight earlier and, um, and thinking about what you bring specifically to this commission. And I remember back when we were all running in 2015 and suggesting to you that you go for certain endorsements in the community and you kept saying to me over and over and over, "But I don't like politics, I hate politics." Fast forward, you know, since I've been a commissioner, I hear from a lot of folks, "Well, I don't like politicians. I don't like politics, I don't like politicians." And it always stands out to me what you used to say when you followed your comments on how much you hate politics. And that was, "I'm a public servant." And it stuck with me. And so I know your voice on this commission will always be in the interest of service to the people of this city. And that's not something you get everywhere. So I greatly appreciate, I greatly appreciate that. And I look forward to working with you over the next two years and seeing what sort of good we can do as a collective body. I'm so happy to have you back and I'm ready to get to work.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson.
I really don't have a lot to say tonight. Welcome again. And familiar faces, got challenges ahead of us here. I feel like we're up to the task, have a good commission, diversity of views, which I think is important. But the capacity to work together for one common goal. And that is for this entity that we create as citizens, our public work through the City of Kalamazoo here. And I know all of us are here because we feel that this is, this is the way that we can manifest what we are hoping that Kalamazoo really can be for everyone who lives here. So, looking forward to the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Cooney.
So, I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Knott and Commissioner Urban for being re-elected. And welcome Commissioner Cunningham. And this is a very important time in the history of our city. We face so many challenges here. The challenge of climate change, that right this week in Bonn, Germany, the United Nations are gathering people to talk about climate change. How does that affect our city? How do we take a stand for the generations to come about what's going to happen with that? How do we keep our city beautiful? How do we ensure that our city has the opportunities that our people deserve? How do we reach out to those in our community, the many who are in struggle? I've been up here for a long time and there's one thing I know about this group of people, that we are problem solvers. We're not partisans, we're not trying to toot our own horn. We're looking at what could happen for the good of this city. And I am so blessed to be able to serve with you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Herb.
Thank you, Mayor Hopewell. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people who are listening in the room for taking part in the November election and electing the four of us to this commission. I think we have, we're very fortunate that we have a commission that trusts one another, is open with one another. That, that doesn't happen always, everywhere. And I think we have something here that we need to nurture and preserve and enhance. And I think we're, we're up to that. Problem solving is something that I particularly enjoy and will have plenty of time and occasion to, to work on that. So, I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the first time in a long time, I get to say this. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Matt, you did an amazing job. Thank you for your service, it means a lot to me, it means a lot to the community. And I told you the night that I left this seat, that I trusted you and that means a lot. And I think moving forward, I'm excited to do the work of the community. I'm excited to work with everyone who is up here and everyone who's in the audience. But I hope that you have a clear understanding, we have some milestones to break. We have some amazing things on the horizon and we do not get there without working together. And although I put a lot of work into this campaign, you know, I think there is more work that I need from you moving forward. And let's be clear, we won't agree on everything. There will be times where you will not like what I have to say and there will be times where I will not like what you have to say. But as I explained before, do we have the capacity to move beyond? Do you have a heart big enough to accept a stance that you may not feel comfortable with? And I think that's imperative. You say that I didn't want endorsements. And the reason why is because for me, you know, if my grandmother endorsed me, that's who I wanted an endorsement from. But I think it's kind of hard to knock doors and say, "My grandmother endorses me." But, um, you know, those who stood behind me, Attorney Parker, she was my campaign manager, she did an amazing job. Amazing job. And I can't express to you how much it means to walk every neighborhood with Jenny. I can't express to you what it means to stay up long nights with Toya going over the financials. I can't express what it means to you to reach out to Wes or Michael at 2:00 in the morning to say, "I need something by 6:00 AM" and for the team to step up and be there. And this is something that we, you know, as a community, we bring to the table. And so I'm excited about that. To our veterans, I appreciate, I appreciate you and I'm glad we had the opportunity to celebrate our veterans, although it's two days past. To my football team, now, everything is done in decency and in order, but please excuse me. How do we work? How do we play? Who houses this? Bite down! Once again, thank you all and I look forward to serving with you. Expect a phone call in the near future, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. And for the first time, I get to say, Vice Mayor Knott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief because after me, there's just one more speech and then there's cake, so... You know, right? I've been talking a lot these last couple of days and I've had the pleasure of serving with all of you for two years. But in the last, give or take, 10 days is when Eric and I started working side by side. And what I am excited about is the fact that I got to know this gentleman while we were on doors in neighborhoods together to see that we have shared values. We didn't, I didn't know you in 2015 when we were both running. And, you know, we've had a lot of laughs, I've learned that he cares about the environment. He cares about economic development and affordable housing. He's very passionate about youth. And all of these are interrelated to lifting people up, it's all about shared prosperity, which is all the strategic priorities found within our Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 plan. So, I'm ready to get back to work. It's been about a month since we've had a business meeting next week, right? And so I'm looking forward to doing that work with all of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I should just not say anything and hit the gavel and we can have the cake, is that what you're saying? Yeah, that ain't happening. First, thank you, everyone. You know, Tuesday last of last week is one of my most favorite days. People getting to walk into a polling precinct and determining who will be representing them in this representative democracy that we have. Local government affects, and no apologies or maybe somewhat of apology to our state representative and even to our county folks, but your local government too. But local government is, is really what affects your day-to-day life. When you go home at night and if you live in the city and actually, if you... When you go home at night, and if you live in the city, and actually, if you live in places other than the city, and you turn on that faucet, that's local government. If you have to go into that small room and do whatever you need to do, and you flush, that's local government. Sometimes you wish you were flushing us, but still, that's, that's local government. When that street gets plowed, those leaves get picked up, that recycling, that's every two weeks, and certainly those individuals that have the uniform, whether it's public services, whether it's parks and recreation, or whether it's the men and women of public safety, that's local government. Stoplights working, crosswalks that are available, parks that have amenities for you, that's local government. And so, what excites me is that you get to determine every two years, and, well, every two years, who gets to do your work. That work that is, as my good friend, Representative Hoadley says, perfectly imperfect work. All of these individuals that I'm happy and excited to serve with, we have to do this together. You don't always have to agree, but we have to do your work together with each other. I'm excited that we have our new Commissioner, Mr. Cunningham, I've missed you. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you stayed in my life, and now I'm glad you're able to serve with us again on this dais. Mr. Urban, welcome back, third time, you get to sit there four years, don't have to do it again for four, and I know how excited you are about that. And then our new Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Knott. It was an interesting night, wasn't it? We didn't know what was going to happen over here. They were battling it out there for a while there, and 60 votes, and we have a new Vice Mayor. But let me tell you, I loved our former Vice Mayor, actually, both of them. Pretty special individuals, but Don, it's been a pleasure working with you as Vice Mayor. You have supported me in so many different ways, and I appreciate you every single day, and I've learned, learned, and learned so much. So, thank you for your service, you aren't going anywhere, and you may have been up here a long time, but I'm hoping you're here a lot longer. And so, to my other two colleagues that didn't have to run, I really envy you so much. You know, it is my most exciting day, I just wish I had to only do it every four years, but you guys wouldn't let that happen, but it's good to be back on the dais with you. Let me just say this, and I'll let you get to the cake. We are on a different journey than we've ever had before. That's going to push many of our sensitivities and our thinking around how we make this government, this city, your community role, how we move this place forward. And I've always learned, and my good mama told me a few times when we were in the car traveling, maybe to Mississippi or somewhere, the road sometimes is bumpy, but we get there. Sometimes some of us fall asleep, not at the wheel, in the car, but we get there. And sometimes, you know, we're going to be scrapping in the car, but we get there. So, tonight, as we move forward over the next two years, that I certainly will have, and the next four years for some of you, I want us to remember that we're in this together. And I say it over and over, and I, and I mean it every time I say it, we are a masterpiece in progress, and all of us, all of you are part of those amazing, amazing painters and knitters that are designing this masterpiece that will never be done, will never be complete. Commissioner Cunningham said it, "Well, we are not going to agree on everything, but we are a representative democracy, and we're hoping that overall, we represent the beliefs and values, the hopes and aspirations you have for Kalamazoo." Every day, I promise, and all of them promise, that we will use our heart and soul to make the decisions that you need us to make. We do want to hear from you, we do want to know what you think, but at the end of the day, we got to keep this place moving forward. I want to thank our staff and all the work you do, because nothing that we do means anything without you. All 640-plus that are working every single day, some of you are in this audience, appreciate you, love you, we're there for you, and we're going to work you harder, just the way it works. Tonight, let's celebrate our city, let's celebrate each other, let's celebrate moving forward together. We are a journey.